I'm going to call to order the Tuesday, April 16th, 2019, meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners, and I would like to recognize and ask that you keep Commissioner Marvin Norman in your prayers. He's recuperating from a procedure and won't be with us this evening. If everyone would please bow your head for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. If you'll please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Jones, would you please review any adjustments to the agenda?
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. We do have two adjustments. We have the addition of under administrative matters of item 8.6, which is a proclamation recognizing one of Iredell County citizens on his 100th birthday. And then we have the addition of a closed-session item property acquisition pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5.
Are there any other adjustments to the agenda? Is there a motion to approve the agenda? So moved. Motion by Commissioner Haupt. All in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to item five, which is presentation of special recognitions and awards. And this evening, we're very pleased to be able to recognize one of our own, our Director of Parks and Recreation Department, is Michelle Hepler. Normally, I would extemporize to try to encapsulate her accomplishments, but there's so many, I couldn't remember them all. So I wanted to share those before we get to this specific recognition, just to let you know the quality of folks that we have that serve the citizens of this county and produce truly amazing results for us for very limited expenditures. So Michelle was actually born here in Iredell County, and she has over 24 years of experience in the outdoor and recreation education industry. She's been working with the Iredell County Parks and Rec Department for over 20 years, beginning in 1998, and she served as a challenge course facilitator, a recreation programmer, an outdoor education program director, the assistance Parks and Recreation Director, and in July 2016, she was named the Parks and Recreation Director of Iredell County. And we actually removed the Parks and Rec, which had been reporting to our facilities department, and created a separate standalone department. She graduated from Western Carolina University and received a bachelor's science degree in Parks and Recreation Management, and she had a core concentration in outdoor recreation. In the first 15 years of her tenure in Iredell County, were dedicated to the development of our own outdoor education division, which included a ropes course and multiple zip lines. Locally, Michelle has served as a board member of the North Carolina Aerial Adventure Association, the Region Seven Chair for North Carolina Parks and Recreation Association, and the Chair of Girls on the Run for the Greater Piedmont. She's also a rotarian, and she has a passion for, you know, fostering engagement and health and wellness programs and activities. Iredell County is fortunate to have her caliber of leadership at a time when we are at an inflection point, from a small county to a large and very prosperous county. Our county basically shakes out as fifth out of 100 counties in terms of economic strength. And our population has doubled in the last 30 years, from the last census in 1990 to today, from 90,000 to over 180,000. And with that increase comes an increased demand for services. Parks and Recreation is not a mandated service that the county has to provide. It is elective. And when counties have lean budgets and small populations, then obviously, the amount of attention given to Parks and Recreation is sometimes minimal. But we are at a point where we are transitioning from that small county sort of mindset, because that's what we were, to a large county. And when you look at the issues of quality of life that drive a lot of employers' decisions about where to locate their businesses and locate their employees, and when you look at the large number of people who are moving from out of state to Iredell County as retirees, they're doing so because of quality of life issues and the fact that we have the lowest tax rate of nine contiguous counties that touch us. And so, we have an eye on the bottom line, but we also recognize that there is a demand for services. And Recreation and Parks are one of those that frankly, we are at that inflection point where we've got to step up our game. And we're very fortunate to have somebody like Michelle Hepler, who has been an absolute master in terms of finding dollars for us that we didn't generate to spend to create those parks and recreational opportunities. We have got a significant part of grant to be able to help develop Jennings Park, which four years ago, didn't exist. It was an idea. We had land that was north of North Iredell High School that hadn't been developed in probably a decade, I guess, since we purchased it. And we had an opportunity with the Sertoma Club to be able to donate four fields that they had off Jennings Road. And with that donation, we were able to then purchase property adjacent to it. Then we entered into some land swaps and have a northern quadrant, if you will, park for the first time for citizens in the northern end of the county that has a, just in fact, was dedicated. And thank Commissioner McNeely for speaking at that engagement. The park will have soccer fields, it'll have pickleball courts, it'll have our ropes course. The ropes course is, was down off of Cornelius Road, and development in the southern end of the county surrounded it with, it became an island out there in the midst of a number of residential developments. And they also are looking at expanding, or putting in an interchange at mile marker 38 in Cornelius Road, and that's going to change potentially the ability to use that property. And so, we were looking for a place to relocate our ropes course. And in the process, we looked at South Iredell, working with South Iredell High School on property there, and it was a good fit, but the cost of just putting in a road was over $200,000, and that was just prohibitive. But we had the opportunity of Jennings Park, to be able to incorporate the ropes course on property up there. And so, that is just going to be a top-notch facility. But it's, takes someone with vision and some, takes someone with some ability to know where the belly buttons are to push, to be able to get things done, and Michelle just does that in spades. So, we're excited that someone besides us has recognized what she brings to the table. She has received an award from the Association for Challenge Course Technology, which is an international organization dedicated to standards and government relations and credentialing and professional development of its members. And it promotes the standard of care and measures of excellence that define the professional practice and effective challenge course programs. I don't know how many of you have ever been on a ropes course, but you just don't go up and swing on a rope. It's, it's very safety-conscious. It's designed to be scary, to push people beyond their limits, but they may not feel that they've got a safety bubble around them, but they really do. And that's, that's that sort of illusion, if you will, that makes it such a great opportunity for people to work as a member of a team and to support one another and to challenge themselves to do things that they didn't think they could do, but actually do it safely. They just don't feel like they're safe. At any rate, Michelle has been a member of the Association for Challenge Course Technology for a number of years, and has served on a number of committees as a member of the Board of Directors of the Association. And she's also been supportive of a number of initiatives in the challenge course and aerial adventure park industry, such as practitioner certification, standards writing, government relations, leadership development, strategic planning, risk management, and insurance advisory. So, since 2002, an award has been created to recognize the outstanding person in that association that's, that's done things for that national, actually not national, international association. And they call that the Critical Link Award. And this year, the recipient of the Critical Link Award is Michelle Hepler. And I would note that she is one of the first, I believe, five women to be able, to be recognized for the contributions that they've made to the Association worldwide. So, at this time, I would ask Michelle to come up. And if the Commissioners could form behind here. I'm sure this is not the star-studded initial presentation that you had, but you're the star in our crowd. And now the floor is yours.
It's been an honor to have the support of the Commissioners and Administration to be able to serve this industry, Association for Challenge Course Technology, aerial adventure park industry, as well as Parks and Recreation, and to bring back to our community, the community that I live in or love in, has been a really, a real pleasure and a joy for me. My first bridge course was in 1985, and I was in like the fifth grade, and I think Bart Thorson was one of our facilitators. And to be recognized and appreciated for the work that we've put into that, really means a lot to me. So, I appreciate your support and thank you.
And I would also note that Michelle's been instrumental in the, the stand-up and the opening of the new Iredell County Recreation Center that is in Troutman, Barium Springs, which is open for business. And so, if you'll go on the county website, you can get information about the different packages for membership, which we think is going to give lots more opportunities for people in the Troutman South area to be able to avail themselves of. So, thank you again, Michelle. Okay, at this time, move on to the adminis, well, a public hearing for consideration of an economic development incentive for Project Spool. This is actually a continued public hearing from two weeks ago. And at this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Chris Younger, who will tee this up and give us the parameters of the request.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board. I'd like to thank you all for allowing us to present before you this evening, Project Spool. Iredell County Economic Development is proud to announce Project Spool's potential plans to locate a new manufacturing facility in Mooresville, North Carolina. At this time, we're not able to fully announce the company name or disclose their manufacturing details due to ongoing negotiations and planning with further state incentives. I can say that they design and manufacture for the automotive industry. Their name and further details will be disclosed at a later date, once we get the green light to do so. The project anticipates creating 61 new full-time positions and generate 4.1 million in new tax investment over the next five years. In accordance to the Iredell County Industrial Development Center Program, we are requesting a tax grant back incentive be granted to Project Spool for five years totaling up to $72,000, which averages approximately 14,400 per year. On behalf of the Iredell County Economic Development, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have at this matter, and thank you for your time.
Any questions for Mr. Younger? No questions. I will reopen the public hearing. At the last public hearing, there was no one signed up to be heard. I don't believe anyone has signed up this evening as well. Is that correct? Nope. Well, then I would inquire of anyone that's here, if you'd like to be heard. If you'd please announce your name and address for the record.
You want my home address?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My name is Glenn Sexton Millsaps, Jr. My home address is 387 Monticello School Road, Statesville, North Carolina.
Now, are you here for the public comment period?
I believe so.
Now, this has to do with the economic.
Okay, this is, my concern is not the economic. Okay, okay.
Well, we'll call the public comment period in just a few minutes.
Okay, thank you.
And bring you up then. And I've got you listed as a speaker. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to potentially be heard? Seeing or hearing none, I will close this public hearing and ask if there's a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve an economic development incentive of up to $72,000 over a five-year period, based on the company's investment of 4.1 million in contention upon a contract being executed within 180 days.
A motion by Commissioner McNeely. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Board. The company appreciates your support with this project. And hopefully, within the next 30 days, we'll be able to fully announce who they are, and we'll be able to wrap this up.
Well, and we thank you, Mr. Younger, and your, and the staff of the Iredell Economic Development Corporation for your diligent efforts to work out all the details and put the icing on the gate to bring high-quality jobs to Iredell County.
Thank you very much.
We'll now move on to administrative matters that we heard at the pre-agenda meeting. And by the way, the pre-agenda meeting at 5:00 is an open meeting conducted in the same room. People are certainly invited to attend, if you'd like. It is generally technical matters that would not be of great interest, and we do try to get staff in that presents those out, so that they're not here late into the evening. So, Ms. Jones, if you could summarize those matters.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. The first item is a request from Finance for approval of Budget Amendment Number 35 in the amount of $421,964 to appropriate lottery proceeds to Iredell Statesville Schools for construction of meeting space at the Career Academy and Technical Center, which is known as CATS, and to approve the application. The second item is a request from Planning and Development for approval of a resolution to waive the requirement to individually approve all secondary road maintenance petitions to the state system. The next item is a request from Tax Administration for approval of the March refunds and releases. There was a request from the Clerk to the Board for approval of minutes from the meeting on April the 2nd, 2019. And the final item was a proclamation that was approved by the Board recognizing one of our Iredell County citizens on his 100th birthday, which is May the 1st.
And just as note for that individual, we will be ascertaining whether he will be able to join us on May the 2nd.
7th, May the 7th.
Okay. Okay. Is there any further comment on the consent items? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, in honor of Commissioner Marvin Norman, who usually makes this motion, so moved.
So noted. Commissioner McNeely's motion in honor of Commissioner Norman.
He's not with us here tonight.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, like sign. Motion carries unanimously. One item on the administrative calendar we brought forward for discussion at the 7:00 hour, that was item 8.4, which is a request from Administration for approval of a resolution in support of Senate Bill 297 to assemble a cancer research advisory panel to study cancer clusters in North Carolina. We are fortunate that our State Senator, Vicky Sawyer, and collabor- Jim Perry and Ted Alexander, have taken action to move the ball forward at the state level to take a look at the entire state of North Carolina and determine where there may be a higher-than-normal or higher-than-average incidence of cancer diagnosis and treatment. And so they will look at the entire state and where there are hotspots or clusters, whatever the appropriate terminology is in the, as a term of art within the medical and scientific community, that they will then drive a greater emphasis on trying to determine the, the scope and the nature of those occurrences, and then what potential causes exist, and then what kind of actions that we can take, either individually, or as a medical community, or as a government entities, to be able to address those issues. So it is very much a fact-finding endeavor to try to create the dots, and then it will be further scientific inquiry that will determine whether those dots can be connected and conclusions drawn, one way or the other. So, this resolution is in support of this legislation, which is currently pending in the Senate. So I will now read the resolution and then entertain a motion to adopt it, and then finish up with the specific request. Whereas Senators Vicki Sawyer, Jim Perry, and Deputy Ted Alexander have filed and sponsored Senate Bill 297, titled, quote, "A bill to be entitled, 'An Act to Direct the North Carolina Policy Collaboratory at the University of North Carolina at Chapel Hill, to assemble a research advisory panel to study and develop recommendations on strategies for implementation of a research program to determine whether any clusters of cancer incidence exist within the state.'" And whereas, Senate Bill 297, seeks to establish a research advisory panel to, quote, "discuss, review, and analyze statewide cancer data," unquote, "in an effort to better determine the existence of cancer, of clusters of cancer incidence in the state of North Carolina." And whereas, pursuant to an investigation by the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services Central Cancer Registry, which found that the rates of papillary thyroid cancer in Iredell County were higher in the southern end of our county during the years of 2005 through 2016 than during 2095, than during 1995 through 2004, as well as higher than state rates, the rate statewide. Whereas, through further investigation, the Central Cancer Registry has determined 11 additional counties in North Carolina that have rates of papillary thyroid cancer higher than the state ride, statewide rate. And whereas, efforts of local residents, elected officials of the state, Iredell County, and the town of Mooresville, along with representatives of Iredell County Government and the Iredell County Health Department, continue to advocate for further research of the issue of the increased rate of thyroid cancer in southeast and southwest Iredell County, and a determination of the cause. And whereas, the proposed legislation will support these efforts, and furthermore, will ultimately promote the health of all citizens of North Carolina, to the end it assists in determining a strategy and means of timely identifying significant clusters of cancer incidence in our community. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the resolution in support of Senate Bill 297 to assemble a cancer research advisory panel to study cancer clusters in North Carolina. And I'd also like to say, I want to, I appreciate their efforts in this, and I appreciate all the efforts our staff and the Health Department, and Susan and Brady, along with all of our partners in Mooresville, and the state, and all levels, in, in moving this process forward.
The motion by Commissioner Howe. Is there any further discussion or comments?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that I, I think that we have come to realize that this registry or committee is a necessary thing. It probably, probably went on too long before we realized there was a cancer cluster in our county. And I'm hoping, for us and the other 11 counties with increased cancer risk, this will be a start to where we can predict these patterns sooner and find the causes and the cures, instead of stumbling on it by happenstance. So I, I applaud this bill that our senators have put forth, and I think it's a great step to solving the problems that we face on a day-to-day issue in this state of North Carolina. And the health is one of the critical things that we face for our people.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to bring out the fact that Representative Fraley and Senator Sawyer, along with our local staff, Ms. Susan Robertson and Brady Freeman, have worked tirelessly on this particular issue.
Heavy lifting.
And have put it, their heart forward on this, that this is something that impacts our families in Iredell County, and it's not something to be taken lightly. Thank you.
And I would remit, be remiss by not pointing out that we owe a debt of gratitude to Ms. Susan Wind, whose efforts of, of trying to determine why her own daughter developed thyroid cancer, and then discovering that there were other people that, in, in the general area, that likewise had children that had developed this cancer. And her efforts to bring attention to the whole issue were amplified. And at the same time, Iredell County Public Health Department was doing its own analysis, given data from the Cancer Registry. And it's sort of like they're working it from two different angles, and we've met in the middle. And so we're, are unified as a community to be able to discover what the facts are, because we don't know what we don't know. And it is a scientific inquiry, and those scientists and medical professionals and environmental specialists will be the ones that provide us the data, so that we can then determine what actions are appropriate for us to take, either as individuals, or the medical community, or for government to take. So, now, the motion is on the floor. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Iredell County Board of Commissioners that Commissioners support the passage of Senate Bill 297 as currently written to promote the health and well-being of our citizens by assisting state and local agencies, local governments, healthcare providers, and our residents with timely identification of significant cancer incidents, ultimately providing greater public awareness and knowledge to the residents of Iredell Want to thank the staff for the numerable hours that have been put on this, particularly Susan Robertson and our, and Brady Freeman, for the tremendous work they've done in terms of organizing well-water collection samples and events for the public. And I'd just like to point out, we do have two upcoming events. One, this Thursday, at 6:00, at the Mooresville Fine Arts Auditorium, where the Virginia Tech environmental specialist will have communicated results of well-testing, that individual well-owners took samples of their water in, and at no cost to our citizens or the county. And those results will be shared with the individuals that had the well-water samples provided. We will not know what individual results are out there, because that, that's private information. But we will have a sense of, of general knowledge about what elements are in people's well-water of any type. And the Virginia Tech folks will be there to explain and put into context those results, and be able to point out what levels, what it means to have an elevated, elevated level of some element, and what are the potential consequences or risks, and what are the things that can be done to mitigate those risks. So, we are looking forward to that. And then on May the 9th, is it? At South Iredell High School, there will be a panel of state experts from Department of Environmental Quality, as well as Department of Health and Human Services, and Duke University, and Virginia Tech. Are they going to be there? Yeah. As well as local officials, who will be looking at the issues, once again, of thyroid cancer, or any other type of cancer that appears to be prevalent. And they'll also be getting some information about the structural coal ash fills that have been, you know, used throughout southern Iredell County, and just a little bit about, from DEQ, about what that process involved, and how that's monitored, and how it was licensed or approved. So, that will be at South Iredell High School, May the 9th, 6:00. And so, we continue to move forward, try to get information out as we get it to the public. So I'd encourage you to attend, or stay tuned. And we now move on to appointments to Boards and Commissions. We have four appointments that are to be filled on the Community Child Protection Team. We have more than four applicants, and I believe the general consensus of the Board is that we have an opportunity to further review all the applications, to be able to rack and stack them appropriately. So is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion we table that until our May 7th meeting.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Howe to table this matter. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimously. We're fortunate that we have a surplus of candidates. You know, a lot of times, we don't.
Very qualified, too.
Very qualified individuals, and so we want to make sure that we have plenty of time to review those applications. Moving on to Item 11, I don't believe there's any unfinished business. Is anybody aware of any? We now move to the public comment period. This is an opportunity, once a month, the second meeting of the month, for any member of the public to share their concerns or observations with the Commission and the public at large. So at this time, we have four folks that have been signed up, and we begin with Glenn And if you would just, once again, state your name and home address into the mic for the record.
I'd like to apologize to the Board earlier. I'm a disabled veteran, so I didn't hear this. But my name is Glenn Sexton Millsaps, Jr. I live at 387 Monticello School Road, Statesville, North Carolina. My purpose for being here today is regarding some complaints that I've received regarding a Bearcat. My understanding is that the county sheriff is requesting funds for a Bearcat. One of the problems that, with requesting the Bearcat is, I'm a retired law enforcement agent from the United States Department of Justice. And during that time, with the Department of Justice, was responsible for investigating Color of the Law investigations. And those investigations, in most cases, led us to communities that allowed us to take a temperature of the community, feel how they felt about the way equipment was being used in the communities. Also served in the United States Marine Corps. And while I served in the Marine Corps, one of the things that was a big concern was how particular equipment was used in communities. And in particular, we're talking about foreign countries. But you take that information, and you bring it back to stateside, you have the same problem. And one of the things that we, that if you review Color of the Law investigations, you will find that, in those investigations, one of the biggest concerns with bringing Bearcat or paramilitary equipment or into communities, is that it doesn't come with a set of policies and procedures. And one of the things that we, that we realized with the Justice Department was, you have to commission a, a citizen review board. You bring a citizen review board, and that review board can pretty much speak to the commission, and let them know how they feel about that, other than, I mean, you can see here tonight, we have no one here to be able to, I mean, from what I understand, there's not a lot of citizens who come to these boards. But a citizen review board who is concerned about what's happening with the, with our law enforcement agency, we can move forward with understanding how they feel about bringing in a Bearcat and other equipment that might be needed by the sheriff's office. And one of the things that was mentioned, or that was asked of the Board of the Chairman, was how does this community feel about this Bearcat? Well, I've spoken to the, I spoke with many individuals in the community, including organizations like the NAACP and other organizations, and they have no information that has come from the sheriff's office. So I would like to ask this Board to take another look at the equipment that the sheriff is requesting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Millsaps, and thank you for your service and your sharing of your concerns. Move on to Carla Fassbender.
My name is Carla Fassbender. I live at 1251 Ostwald Amity Road, and I'm here to speak to you about the May 1st Rally for Public Education in Raleigh. I am a teacher in Iredell Statesville Schools. Last year's event didn't allow us a lot of time to plan, and when schools closed, many children were without food. This year, we're on top of that issue. We're on top of the needs of our children, because they truly do come first. That's why I and many other district employees are going to Raleigh on May 1st. We know each year, you are asked to spend more money than the year before to fund our schools, and we know how difficult it must be for you to balance education needs with other budgetary needs. We are tired of the state shifting the burden of its constitutional right to fund our schools onto the counties, and we invite you to join us. If that alone isn't enough, we ask you to join us to help all school employees earn a living wage. Our bus drivers are the first school employee students see each morning, and the last school employee they see each day. Our bus drivers make below the poverty wage. Most work a second position in our schools. Many work an additional job just to get by. Our child nutrition workers are another underpaid employee. If they worked in the private sector, many would already be earning the $15 an hour that we are asking for. I don't know what your views are individually on raising salaries for these and other classified school employees, but I do know that such a raise would have a positive economic impact in our communities. A higher salary means more money to spend and put back into our tax base. For that, I invite you to join us in Raleigh and support our efforts. Our bus drivers know like no other employee what our children are coming from each day. They know what baggage they have. They know which children have a parent at the bus stop, which children don't. They know who gets on the bus on the coldest days without a jacket on, often a T-shirt. And they make sure to make, that child goes home with the right jacket. Our bus drivers teach our kids as TAs. They clean our schools as custodians. They work hard to keep our schools running smoothly every day. For them, I am asking you to join us in support on May 1st. We have been asked, why a school day? Why not wait until summer? Why not go on a weekend? Just write a letter, make a phone call. We've done that, and it hasn't worked. We've done this before, too. Last year, we went to Raleigh, and it made a difference. We were able to elect more Democrats and Republicans who are supportive of public education in 2019. And more pro-public education legislation is making its way through the legislative process. But it falls short of fully... But it falls short of fully funding and adequately funding our schools. We have over 300 Iredal Statesville Schools employees who have submitted leave requests for May 1st. The number is growing hourly. For us, it's personal. We are taking a stand for strong schools, strong students, and strong communities. Thank you for your time, and I hope to see you on May 1st.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fassbender. And we thank all the school teachers and teachers assistants and support staff that daily work with our children, turning them into young adults. Mr. Todd Scott?
Good evening, Mr. Mallory, Mr. County Manager. My name is Todd Scott. I'm from 116 Natter West Drive, Statesville, North Carolina, 28625. As of Saturday, I am the newly elected president of the Statesville NAACP. So, I just wanted to introduce myself, and once I meet with my new executive board, you will be seeing me. I'm going to be all over around Statesville. I would also like to speak on this bear cat. Been an ex-combat veteran, infantry. We don't need it. And I say that the only way we would need it is if somebody had high-powered weapons, AK-47s, AR-15s, and it's going on all over Statesville, all the time. That's the only way we need it. We have a SWAT team. So, I think we should take that money, which is, I heard it was 300,000, I don't know. We need, our sheriff departments, they need cameras. We need transparency. They should take that money and get cameras on every officer, not a bear cat. It's just like buying a beach house and it's $300,000, but you only go there once a year. We are not Charlotte, we are not New York City, we are not LA. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott, and congratulations on your new position with the NAACP. The final person we have signed up this evening is Megan Scooby.
Close enough.
What?
Scoby.
Scoby. Not Scooby Doo.
No, it's close enough. That's what most people call me, anyway. My name is Megan Scooby. I live at 1948 North Ridge Court in Statesville. I am also a teacher at the Iredal Statesville Schools. Thank you for allowing me to speak with you today. I know you guys have a difficult position and you often hear all the negatives from the community. I know how hard that is. There is never a way to please all the people all the time. I come here today to ask for your support on May 1st. The employees at Iredal Statesville Schools, and that includes teachers, TAs, custodians, bus drivers, school nurses, bookkeepers, child nutritional workers, and others, are requesting the day to advocate for their students and for themselves. Carla has covered most of the details on why we're going, so I don't feel like I need to sit up here and reiterate that point. But this isn't an issue that should be the teachers and staff versus the board and the commissioners. We should be working as a community, we should be working as a community to make positive change in this district. We ask that you will join us and support us. Come with us to Raleigh on May 1st. Strong schools create a strong community. Thank you for your time, and I, like Carla and many other school employees, hope to see you in Raleigh on May 1st. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Scooby. That exhausts our list of folks that signed up, but I would ask if there's anyone in the audience that would like to be heard. Well, seeing and hearing none, we will move on. And does any of the commissioners want to say anything in response to any of the issues or concerns raised this evening?
I'd just like to say, I think it's kind of ironic. Actually, we were scheduled to go May the 1st of the counties in North Carolina to talk to their legislatures about different issues, not only education but other things. We've postponed to May the 8th, so we will not be there when y'all are there, just so there won't be conflict to a point. So, I just kind of think it's ironic that we were going and we have moved our date to May the 8th. That is county day.
That's scheduling conflict.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a couple of comments. Typically, I know that the board has a standing policy. We typically don't respond to some comments. However, tonight, both of these issues are important to our citizenry throughout the county. And so, I want to address first the issue that Mr. Scott and Mr. Millsaps addressed as far as the bear cat with the sheriff's office. I also am a 31-year law enforcement veteran. Unfortunately, in my career, I've had to take a life. And so, hearing the discussions from citizens during the discussion about the bear cat and since, I want to say, you know, one, it's kind of like a bulletproof vest or some other things in life. You hope you never have to need it, but it's good to have it. It's kind of like insurance on your car and your home. You hope you never need it, but it's good to have it. But the bear cat, the decision on that, I'm told by the sheriff, was made to deliver the SWAT team members and law enforcement personnel into bad situations as safely as possible. The money used to do that was through seed funds that his officers seized while on the job. It could be used for other things, but the sheriff, as far as your request to have a review board, the sheriff is elected as we are. So, from the citizens that we've talked to before that decision was made and since that decision was made, I look at it from this perspective personally, as elected board. I take my job seriously. The sheriff, being elected official as we are, his review board is every four years, the voters in Iredal County. That's my opinion. And so, from the public's perspective, the decisions made in the sheriff's office to purchase property, I mean, to purchase equipment, the use of the equipment, at times, I understand we're going to disagree about that, but he's elected by the citizens of Iredal County to make those final decisions. And if the citizens, which is his review board and the sheriff's checks and balances, I think it's up to them at the end of the day, every four years, to judge those processes. I respect both of your gentlemen's opinions. I agree with Mr. Scott. The best way to engage in the future, and Mr. Millsaps says, the NAACP, meet with and engage the chief deputy, Ellis is back there, the sheriff, on issues and concerns. Having been in law enforcement 31 years, I was a cops officer and worked in a lot of different divisions. So, I understand the importance of community policing and the perception of coming in heavy and not communicating well with the public. So, just, I just wanted to say that, that those decisions are made, I look at it as the elected people in the county electees, the sheriff. So, they're his review board, unless he decides and some other process needs to be taken. But the funds used for that was seized by his deputies. So, I think our board, if I can speak for them, we gave him discretion on the final call of how that was to be spent. So, I would just like to say that. As far as Carla and Ms. Scooby, as far as the schools, James and I serve on the School Education Task Force. We respect, all of our board does, the job that the teachers are married to a principle in full disclosure. So, we understand the challenges. We agree that the unfunded mandates coming down from the state raises affect Iredal County because we have to match on the local side benefits and things like that. I would just ask you, from an Education Task Force member, that where possible, try to get some citizens, and I've heard rumors of parents going in behalf of teachers so teachers can show up and teach. We've been asked to come and speak at some of the schools that day while some of you guys are going to Raleigh. So, engage with your parents and get those people to go advocate. I think that's a strong message, maybe even stronger than a teacher coming asking for better rights and benefits and things like that. You've got parents and citizens advocating on your behalf. We, as a board, support you more than most counties, and I know you agree with that. So, as an Education Task Force member and a community member and a taxpayer, we all respect your right to do what you're doing. We're just asking you to make sure along the way, we don't lose support for education during the process. And you understand where I'm coming from with that. I appreciate your advanced planning this time, more so than last time. I think that'll help a lot because a lot of these kids do just receive food and things while they're at school and those type of issues, too. So, I know you are cognizant of that. But I just wanted to respond to those two things because both issues are important to our communities, and a lot of thought went into the decision for the sheriff, but the final discretion went to him because he is elected for those, by the citizenry of Iredal County. Thank you.
And I would just say, relative to the bear cat, what was persuasive to us as commissioners, you know, was the ability to either deliver as safely as possible or extract officers from situations where they're pinned down, which is not a capability that we have right now. You know, it's not, it was never discussed to be used in some sort of generic crowd control issue, which is what you typically see on television and all. That's not Iredal County. I think you'll find that the sheriff and his chief deputies and entire staff have been very proactive in terms of reaching out to all of the communities in this county and engaging to discuss issues so that everyone understands different perspectives and is attuned to those and sensitive to those. And so, that open line of communication that has been established needs to continue. And so, I would just encourage everyone involved, if you feel that there's been a lack of communication or anything, that you bridge that gap. And that's a two-way street. It's, you've raised issues, and I know that the sheriff's department hears those issues. And I'm sure that they will respond accordingly and engage. So, you know, when it comes to how you utilize equipment, there ought to be, you know, a prescribed method, a prescribed circumstances, you know, so that it's just not on the fly. And I'm sure that the sheriff's department has access to those standards and tactics and techniques and will incorporate them into some sort of standard operating procedure like many other issues. So, thank you for raising those issues, and we thank our educators for the job they do on a daily basis. We've said many times, you know, that we are focused on economic development, and economic development and education are joined at the hip. Workforce development is the long pole in the tent, and we are very focused on that, and our schools have been very responsive and in terms of looking at career pathways and developing that curriculum and making education more relevant to the ability of kids to be able to graduate from high school. And if they're going to college, they go to college. But if they're not going to college, that they can go into good-paying jobs and that they're prepared with the soft skills and the hard skills. So, that's a team effort. Everybody plows a little different field. And, you know, as you go through the process of trying to influence policy in Raleigh or Washington, which are above our pay grades, but nonetheless, you know, as citizens, we all have the right, constitutional right, to petition and redress grievances in government to our government-elected officials. And I would just encourage that, as you go through the process, as Commissioner Haupt said, that you achieve a balance between the mission that you have, delivering education to children, with the desired, you know, communication of your needs and the resources that you need to be able to accomplish that, that those are not mutually exclusive. You can achieve both through a variety of mechanisms. And so, we believe that, from what we've heard, that Iredal Statesville Schools will continue to operate on May 1st, but will have, you know, people covering down so that students aren't put at risk or set back a day. But nonetheless, you're able to effectively communicate your positions to our legislators and the Department of Public Instruction. So, we're all in it together, and we hope for good results. Any further comments? No? Okay. Any new business? No new business? County managers report?
Thank you, Chairman Mallory. Just a few announcements for the group. This week is Telecommunicator Appreciation Week, and the banquet for our telecommunicators will be held on Thursday, the April 18th, at Cooperative Extension from 3 until 6. Also, on the exact same day, the, as Chairman Mallory was saying earlier, the Virginia Tech Community Education Meeting will be Thursday, April 18th, at Mooresville High Performing Arts Center, and that will be from 6 until 8. And just to state, we've had a lot of support from our community. They disseminated 930 water test kits and had 780 returned, and that's an 84% return rate, which is wonderful. So, but they will be coming, and that meeting will be on Thursday from 6 until 8. Great news that renovations will soon begin at our public library on the bottom floor to get that facility renovated and back open for public use. So, that will be starting in short order, and we hope to have that kicked off in the very near future so we can open that area again and use that. They have taken everything in the bottom floor and relocated on the other two floors, and they have been pressed for space. So, we're hoping to get that bottom floor back in operation. Just an announcement that the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event is set for next Saturday, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, April 27th, from 8 until 12:30. And this will be at the Town of Mooresville's Public Operations Center at 2523 Charlotte Highway. There's information on our website regarding this. And finally, just a reminder that we will be closed this Friday, which is April 19th, for the Good Friday holiday.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. We did have a closed session after our pre-agenda meeting pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11, subsection 85, relating to property acquisition, and there are no actual items to report at this time. Is there anything else for the good of the order?
Wish everybody a happy Easter.
Yes, and a safe Easter. And, all in, is there a motion to adjourn?
He has risen, and I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Ely. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Amen.